Good evening, everybody. It's now six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. Tonight, prayer will be given by Alderman Bingle.
Thank you very much. Our Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are so worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we in this city has been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather today. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. For it's in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is your republic, our borders stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you comment?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, here. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here. At this time, the first item of business is the consent agenda. Does everybody have a chance to take a look at that?
Mayor Outlaw, I would like to make a motion that we remove item number four from the consent agenda due to the fact that we have not confirmed this is going to happen because of some other steps we have to follow within the city. So, I've already spoken to Ms. Williams, and I'd like to have it removed.
Have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The remaining consent agenda item?
Move, we approve.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Let's go to item number six. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'm going to ask the Chief to come up. He was going to give a report on the part-time animal control, or actually, it's more like the funding for the additional animal control that we were given by the board. I think Alderman Odom had requested that an update be given as to where we stand with that. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Summers, who's going to report on that progress that we've made so far.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As requested, forwarded in your packet is a memo from me, August 16th. And what I will do is just hit some of the highlight points, rather than read the entire thing. Decision was made to fund a part-time animal control officer, or seek assistance to perform the duties of a part-time animal control officer. Staff immediately began researching the data that we have to determine what is the best times that we would need the assistance of an animal control officer. Based on research, it was determined that the best use of a part-time ACO would have to, would be some weeknights between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. And also, to put that particular person in a rotation schedule with our existing animal control officer. The on-call status in the rotation procedure would involve calls that are life-threatening to an injured animal, or an animal disposing, public safety threat, or any situation where a, where the expertise of an animal control officer would be needed. We immediately attempted to try to identify some certified or trained animal control officers in the area that might be able to fulfill this part-time assignment. We identified several, but they all declined due to their current job schedule conflicting with what we needed them to do. On June 4th, 2018, Alderman Bingle and Astor called a meeting to discuss the possibility of outsourcing the part-time animal control position with the Colonial Capital Humane Society, who had expressed an interest in doing so. The current city ordinance only permits city employees, specifically animal control officers and police officers, to conduct enforcement. Other issues identified would be who would oversee their activities and any liability that might occur with the city. We, on August 7th, excuse me, in the early part of August, we received a document from the Humane Society outlining some of the questions that we had. The document was forwarded to our city attorney, and he certainly can speak for himself, but he determined that an extensive amount of legal time and research would be necessary, and this would be the first of the kind in the state. In addition to that, staff queried all police departments in the state of North Carolina with reference to anyone who has some type of arrangement with the Humane Societies in terms of enforcement. No one replied that they had such arrangements. However, they did have arrangements where the Humane Society would shelter their dogs, but none in the enforcement arena. So, in sum, there's basically two concerns. The first concern is the enforcement part. We need someone that can obviously take care of cruelty cases, injured animals, things of that nature that require a specific expertise. And then, the second issue would be, after we identify those animals or come across those animals, what do we do with them? I think there is a role with the Humane Society, maybe sheltering animals after we identify them, but as far as the enforcement activity, I think we still need to try to find someone with some expertise that can assist us in that matter. And we have, and currently, we have the position being advertised on the city website.
Board have questions? You haven't had any success at all in hiring a part-time person, correct?
No. Again, it's only been up since Monday. The other activity that we've done is talk to current animal control officers, and as I stated, it conflicted with their schedule.
Do you know if there's any interest since the Monday?
I don't know.
Chief, do we have a, do we have a plan B? So, let's say, you can't find anybody part-time. We still have a need. We have to try to figure out something because we are, you know, it's becoming, it's an issue. We, as Aldermen, are getting the calls for the non-covered hours. I mean, is it, what would we have to do then? Appropriate more money for a full-time? Are you saying that that would, we could find somebody if it was full-time versus part-time?
That would be ideal, because if we can't find someone that's already trained or have expertise in this area, it would involve significant amount of training. And so, if we could hire someone who has an interest in it and a limited background, we could certainly provide them the training.
I have great concern over this.
I do too, and I think it's time that we do something. I mean, it's, um, the police department's in a bad position. They don't have anybody that after hours to take care of the animal control or the animal problems. Recently, we had an incident that occurred that needed some after-hour animal control officers to respond. So, the, we, for years and years and years, we had two animal control officers, and in May of 2014, our, one of our animal control officers resigned, and the board immediately froze and eliminated the position. So, we've been with only one since that time, and he can't work but 40 hours a week. So, and I understand about 15% of your calls come in after hours.
Correct.
So, hiring another animal control officer, would that provide us 24-hour coverage?
It would create a rotation system, but we're not only concerned with the calls after hours, we're also concerned with the calls during hours, because the current ACO has training, of course, wants to take annual leave, get sick sometimes, so we have times during the normal hours that we don't have coverage.
Chief, right now, any animals picked up after hours, they're put in the garage over at the animal shelter until the next morning?
That is basically what happens. If we pick an animal up after it's closed, and you obviously wouldn't want to put an injured animal in that condition.
Right, exactly.
But we stick them in the garage, and when the shelter opens in the morning, then they take them in.
Is there a possibility that the Humane Society can take them in after hours? I don't know how we even explore that.
I've talked to some of the people at the Humane Society about that, and I think they're willing to do anything to help the animals. You know, if it means going out, you know, and opening up their shelter to help us out and where we can, other than the obvious, like you and I spoke about, if an animal, if there was a chain of custody issue dealing with the animal, then you would have to come up with a different plan for that. But I'm sure 99.9% of the time, they, we could, if the county wouldn't give us access to the animal shelter, then we could certainly probably work out something with the Humane Society.
That's correct, and they're probably, rare are the occasion, but there probably occasions where the animal might need immediate medical attention, and what we're trying to do is work out some arrangement with an on-call vet that we can carry them to.
Well, the animal shelter, the Humane Society already has that.
Okay, so.
I mean, they, they carry animals to the emergency hospital 24 hours a day.
So, they could assist us in that.
Yes. Well. One note, if you have a question?
Chief, is there only one person in our entire department that's capable of handling ACO calls?
Right now, I have two people trained. I have Lieutenant Morrison Brown, who can't because of medical reasons perform the duty. And then, I have Officer Hollowell, who also is trained to do it. But mind you, they're doing it in addition to the other police duties that they have to do.
Are they capable of picking a dog up?
Yes. Officer Hollowell is, but not Lieutenant, no.
You say, pick up a dog so they can assess, they have the training to assess the situation, decide if the dog is in distress, or if there is in danger, and then actually remove the dog from the property and take them?
Yes, yes.
And in their car?
Yeah, any officer can do that, but what most officers don't have is the tools to do it, you know, to take the dog in, don't have the equipment to transport the dog, and Officer Hollowell can do that.
Chief, this is just a hypothetical question, but your officers that handle your canine animals, they are not trained in any capacity to be able to?
No, ma'am, that's totally different.
Totally different, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I just don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. So, either we need to decide if, you know, if you want to give it 30 more days, or how many, you know, short amount of time to hire a part-time. If we can't find it, then we need to discuss a full-time or do something. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion to hire, if we go ahead and move, hiring a full-time position tonight. You know, it's, it's, you know, it's a shame that an animal has to sit in a garage and needs, might need medical attention, or it needs to be picked up, and we don't have anyone to pick it up.
I have no problem, but since he's in process, I would like to maybe at least give it the two weeks.
Okay.
Till our next meeting, and then come back with saying, you know, we have applications, we don't have applications. Here's what it's going to cost me to hire this second animal control officer, and, you know, I would want that person to do the hours where you're showing the need is. So, you know, either overlap, or do some morning and evening hours, something, or weekend hours, so that we are covered. We just need to be covered when we're not.
And previously, when we had to, we had them work overlapping shifts and covering weekends also, but then you had two people that could be on call. So, the chances that you didn't have someone available was less.
Right. So, that's what I'd like to do, because I'd like, before I'm going on, I just want information onto what the cost is and all of that. So, if we can, please put that on the September 11th.
Chief, another question. So, if something happens to one of your canines, needs a medical attention, where do you take that animal?
I do know we have a particular vet that our canine goes to, but I'm not really, I can't tell you off the top of my head who that person is.
Well, can you reach out, or some of your staff reach out to that vet and ask if, in the meantime, while we're trying to get Alderman's rolling, if they would assist us in, you know, the animal care?
I think, as Alderman Astor said, I think we can use the Humane Society to assist us in housing some of the pets. The only issue is if we have a case where there's some type of chain of custody required, then I would probably need to find a vet that I can assure that he's going to be in that cage, and we can kind of seal the cage to some degree, and control what the animal is given to eat and drink, those things of that nature.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? So, we agreed to wait till the next meeting to see if we had any?
But not beyond that, yes.
Part-time people applying, or any part-time interest, and then go from there?
I agree.
Okay. Let's go to item 7, 8, 9.
Thanks, Chief.
Does everybody have a chance? Let's start with number seven.
I believe we were.
I just want to make sure, I need, I need it pulled, if you want to pull it.
Motion. I'd like to make a motion that we table item number 7, 8, and 9 for further discussion. I do want to say that our staff has worked really hard in trying to get this together, but the developers would like some additional time to talk to them. With that being said, I want to make it very clear that we're not going to kick this can down the road either, and we need to do it with haste. I'm not going to, you know, put this out there another three, four months, come back. We need to go ahead and meet within the next week to 10 days. I know one of the developers is out of town. I'm not sure, when does he do back?
I think it's end of September.
The end of September?
He's been gone for a few weeks.
Well, I really want to get this thing moving, so as soon as he can get back and we can have a meeting, I'd like to do this, so we're not delaying all the work of staff.
I'll second that, and I will say that I believe, unless I'm mistaken, the last meeting that that working group had was about a year ago. There was some discussion about some of these changes presented. It was, I think it was the cul-de-sac issue was the hot topic at the time, and I just remember it was that back that far, because Alderman Blackiston and myself were there. So, I know it's been a while since that group was together, but I agree.
Well, I think they met again, because we did take up that issue with the cul-de-sac, and did try to modify that, but I make that motion that we table 7, 8, and 9.
Motion by Alderman Bingle, seconded by Alderman Odom. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Item number 10, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. At the August 14th, 2018 board meeting, rules and regulations were adopted with respect to the city-owned leased parking lots. These are not to be confused with the on-street parking. These are the city-owned lots that we have, where we lease those spaces on a regular basis, usually annually. And in doing so, there were some rules and regulations that needed to be clarified with regards to what is allowable and what is not allowed, especially when it comes to commercial trash dumpsters and the location of dumpsters within these particular areas. There are some revisions that are outlined in the red light version of the rules and regulations that's included in your packet, along with a map that shows some of the exhibit area that we are discussing. And we would be happy to answer any kind of questions that you may have regarding these rules and regulations for the leased parking lot.
Board have questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing that I want to be clear on is that the residents and the property owners back there have all had an opportunity to take part within the making of these rules and regulations.
This is, this is on city property. It is not on public, not on private property. So, it is on city property. The people that would be participating in that, which were 13 different owners and property, property owners and businesses, have agreed they would be signing MOU. We've already agreed to do this. This is the rules and regulations that we set forth. Now, there is a meeting of all the property owners on September the 18th to discuss potential easements and other things, regardless of the fact that it's still our city property. If it was private property, or we were trying to do something, I could understand that, but it's city property, and we are trying to get the trash under control. You can look at the picture and see where all the trash cans are. I wish they could turn that upside down so you could see it a little bit better, but if you, if you hold the picture and look at the entrance from the Craven Street, Morgan's Lot, whatever you want to call it, you'll see the yellow D's currently. Those are all the dumpsters.
There you go.
That are currently there. Yeah, you may want, okay, so this is where you come in, the top of it is the Morgan's area, where you come in by the side of Morgan's. So, currently, the yellow, there's two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 dumpsters. What we would be doing at this point is removing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 dumpsters on the right-hand side of it to go into the green spaces. And the people on the other half, so you're looking at where Morgan's is located, you see the 235 Craven Street building? So, everybody from that area around would be participating, plus Mike Lenz, who has MJ's. He currently has the cardboard dumpsters that's right next to Dr. Polo's residence. That will go away, which I think Dr. Polo would be happy of, and he will participate in the cardboard dumpster, and I believe he might even share that with Captain Raddies. I'm not 100% sure on that, but there's, like I said, 13 different participants.
Well, that was my main concern, because I know Dr. Polo was very adamant about his decision in some of this. That's the reason why I asked you, whether they involved.
But again, and you know, that's why I kind of, you know, had a lot of discussion back and forth, because this is having to do with the city. We're not, we're not encroaching on anybody's private property. What we're trying to do is make the private property better, but not having all these trash cans around. So, that's the situation. But with, with that being said, there is a meeting of all property owners September 18th. Encourage anybody to attend that wants to. Six, 5:30 at, no, excuse me, 6:00 at the Chamber offices. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for asking that question.
Yes, sir. Question on, on these, one issue, topic that came up when we had our advisory council was the opportunity for other people when a lease comes open. Is there a methodology that we're going to use, or is it just if you're lucky enough to have one now, as long as you continue to renew it, and you're always going to have it?
You're talking regarding the parking space?
Yeah, the leased parking spaces.
You know, that's what we're discussing right now. The end result honestly could potentially be kiosk, and that would solve that problem. But they are in discussions, and we've asked that prior to the end of the year, when the leases expire, that they come back with a recommendation to us. So, we are going to need to address that.
Okay.
Because I agree that that can be an issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the rules and regulations for leases of parking spaces.
Second. Motion and second. Is there further discussion? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle? Yes. Alderwoman Harris? Yes. Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 11, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This item is a resolution to approve staff submitting an application for a North Carolina Public Beach and Waterfront Access Grant. If this application is approved and we receive that funding, it will be utilized for amenities that will go at Martin Marietta Park to include canoe and kayak access, and a shelter that will have restrooms. Anticipated cost of this project is approximately $130,000. Grant funds in the amount of the application that we will seek is $97,500. We have a match, a 75%, 25% grant application process, so the 25% match of that project cost would be $32,500 to the city. As an aside, I was going to save this announcement for my notes, but I do want to go ahead and announce that we found out Friday that we were awarded the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant in the amount of $475,000 to go towards our Martin Marietta project. So, that's exciting news, and Foster and I are working now to come back before the board to kind of give you an update as to what we plan to do with that money, if the board wishes to add anything to it, and kind of show you that phasing as we intend to do those particular projects. So, obviously, with the $475,000 that we have been awarded, we have specific items that we have to complete that were part of the application process, so obviously, those items will be covered with that, with those funds. But very exciting news, and for any of y'all that wish to do so, reach out to your local legislators and thank them for their support. Some of them wrote in letters supporting our project up in, our legislators up in Raleigh, so, but very excited that that's a funded project now.
Okay.
Mayor, question? Mr. Manager, I know in the past, sometimes we have actually budgeted for grants. I know we do so out of some of the other departments. So, according to the letter, it says that half of our match can be in kind, so we're only looking at like 16, 250 in cash. Is that something we have budgeted already, or would that require us to do a budget amendment if we were awarded this? Any ideas? Do you remember JR, whether that was included as part of our grant funds?
We have, sorry about that, I didn't do the mic. We have budgeted in the general fund $50,000 for use as matches toward grants, so if that's necessary, we will apply that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to approve the submission of an application for the North Carolina Public Beach and Waterfront Access Grant.
Second.
Can we have a motion by Alderman Best, seconded by Alderman Bingle?
I think it was Kinsey.
Kinsey, I think it was.
Alderman Kinsey? Any further discussion? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle? Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number 12 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Craven County for the 2018 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. These grant funds will be utilized to purchase equipment and materials for personnel workstations for the Coastal Narcotics Enforcement Team. This is shared both with the county sheriff's office as well as our staff. Because the police department is a disparate jurisdiction with Craven County under the grant, a memorandum of understanding is required. This MOU basically covers this, this particular subject, and agrees to use $11,334 in grant funds for the purchase of these workstations for both the county sheriff's office and the city officers who work in this area.
Okay, board have questions?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Craven County for the 2018 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award.
Second. Motion by Alderman Astor, seconded by Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is a resolution approving a school resource officer contract with Craven County Board of Education. Each year, we renew or bring this before the board for renewal, and I'm sure that the Department of, or Board of Education does the same. But basically, this is funding in a contractual agreement with the Board of Education in Craven County schools to provide school resource officers at New Bern High School, Grover Seaford's Middle School, H.J. McDonald's Middle School, those for the 2018-19 school year. The contract provides for the Board of Education to pay the city $38,975 per school resource officer to help us offset some of the costs of the salaries and benefits. There's a memo that's included in your packet that kind of covers some of this regarding the school resource officers and the contractual arrangement in itself. We're happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Comments? I don't know where to start.
I'll get more into that on the next one. This is kind of the current one.
Well, I still have a couple of questions on this one. I noticed that the contract is dated the first day of July 2018, and it's August, so we're just seeing it now. I don't, I've been concerned, because when this was brought to my attention, I couldn't remember seeing school resource officers funded in our budget. So, I went.
So I went through the budget book from this year, I went in the budget book from last year, and I could not find any line items that could tell me how much it costs for us to have a school resource officer. I then see this, and it's, you know, July first, and I'm like, well, why didn't we talk about this to have the monies? So the first comment I wanna make is, moving forward, I really wanna see a line item in our budget that tells us how much it costs us to fund school resource officers. Because based on the information that Mr. Sabatelli has provided me, um, the average, the cost for an SRO with salary and benefits, vehicle, uniforms, and equipment is eighty-one thousand dollars. We get refunded from the Craven County Board of Education, which receives that money from the state of North Carolina, thirty-eight thousand nine seventy-five. So the city's share is forty-two thousand per officer. Times that by four, it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's a line item, and that's in our budget, that I didn't know was in our budget. It was just lumped under, um, officers, and I think it should be pulled out, so I know. So, so my citizens, the citizens of the city of New Bern are paying a hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars a year for four resource officers, two in the high school, one at Grover C. and one in H.J. I'm not debating the fact that they should or shouldn't be there, I'm just concerned that I don't see this clearly stated in our budget. I don't see it clearly stated, the money we receive, it's just in a lump sum, and I think it needs to be spelt out for the transparency of the city. But I'm also concerned in that we're funding officers in these schools where kids from Trent Woods, kids from River Bend, and kids from James City, and crisis creek, and all over areas that are not the city of New Bern attend, but our, our citizens are burdened with providing this funding, and I am concerned. Again, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm concerned that we are putting this money every week. I know myself, possibly Alderman Harris, possibly Alderman Best, we are questioned by our citizens why we don't have more police force in the area, why we're not seeing more patrols walking the street, why, you know, why, why, why? And we're told we don't have enough funds. Yet, we all pay county taxes, but we're having to supplement funds for a county school. That concerns me. So that's my comment on, on the whole thing. When we get to the next item, now we're gonna be asked to take an additional burden on to the tune of sixty-eight thousand three sixty-four, which means we will have a yearly burden of two hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
The sad situation is, is that this, we're receiving this tonight, and school's already started.
Amen.
So, what do you do? Your hands are tied.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I'm, I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the school resource officer contract with Craven County Board of Education with the under, because of the safety of our children, with the understanding that as soon as we can, some serious conversation takes place with the Board of Education in Craven County on this problem that Sabrina just mentioned.
Second, discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I would, I would prefer to, to table it for, for two weeks and try to enter into some discussion with the county, um, mostly with the second one as well as the first one, because, um, again, I, I don't see enough information. I'm really concerned about the cost to the taxpayers of the city of New Bern. I've been made aware that the city of Havelock has voted this down, so they have said no, because they believe that they're being double taxed, because they're already paying county taxes. Um, the, the county commissioners don't contribute a single penny towards any of the school resource officers. We're having to subsidize it. County schools belong to the county, and I would like to at least see some of that, just because our funds are just as tight as everybody else's funds.
Well, to chime in on this, you know, where this New Bern Senior High School is, if it were a quarter mile further, it wouldn't be in the city. So does that then mean that it would be a, a deputy sheriff? And why would a high school or junior high have any more need for security than our below elementary schools? And, you know, the, the whole thing is, we're, I, I have not shown leadership in the board and staff, we, we've not had it together, because the first thing we should've done is, is just like you said, River Bend, Trent Woods, city, New Bern, Havelock, Vanceboro, Daler, Cove City. We've got to get it together. I know there's one county in North Carolina that has, has gotten legislation through the General Assembly that is mandated that that county get resource officers in all their schools, and they be funded by the county. Does, uh, the SRO, uh, address, uh, bullying in school? I don't know, maybe so. Does it, uh, address mental illness in school? I don't know, maybe so. But there's so many other items that are, are concerning. You know, the major, the main concern, I've heard, I've heard a lot of things out here, I just want you to know, and, and the concern I have, uh, outside the fact that every institution needs a resource officer, is the fact that, that it, it appears that the communication level of security is best served by city of New Bern police officers. And that, 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 that's a fundamental flaw to me, that the county and other municipal counties in our city are not communicating about security. That sends a really strong message to me, that we, we got a major issue here, as to why can't, uh, a county deputy sheriff communicate and assist and do mutual aid with a city police officer? So, uh, we're not gonna fix this tonight, we're not gonna fix it in two weeks. I'm gonna hold my nose and vote for this, because it's the right thing for the children, but somebody better get together and, and get with our local Raleigh delegation and get something to fix this problem in Craven County.
Well, I, I totally agree, and unfortunately, you know, I, I'm feeling somewhat bullied that this is a political hot potato right now, that we're in an election season, that, you know, we've got sheriffs running, or whatever you wanna say, and I don't wanna be bullied. My job, when I took my oath of office, it was to protect the interests and the, and the taxpayers of the city of New Bern, period. And it's my job to look over the finances, make sure that we're spending our ci- city taxes as, you know, prudently as possible. Sometimes we do a better job than others, there's no doubt about it. But my, I just want to voice my concern, I agree with you, Mayor. Uh, the children are our first concern, but I just wanted to say that I don't like the, the political nature of this. I wanna do what's right for our citizens, but I understand that we've got our backs in the corner. And I really, um, I have reached out to one of the county commissioners, and I would like for us to try to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks regardless, to talk about this, because when's this gonna stop? At what point? So, you know, here, we can't, we can't afford an animal control officer, but we're gonna have to pay for two additional policemen tonight in our next agenda.
And on the next item, the problem that the Havelock commissioners have, is the funding is only for, at best, two years, possibly one year.
Right.
And then, when, when they approve of that, and then the funding runs out, then the city of Havelock will be responsible for, for the whole funding mechanism on that.
Right.
And then it looks bad on them that they're not doing it, that the parents are gonna be concerned, uh, not that they shouldn't be concerned now anyway, so, again, I don't have all answers tonight, but I tell you, we gotta, we gotta get a handle on this one real quick, because in today's society, you can't not have a resource officer in these schools.
And I agree with you, and I understand, um, both parts, but my comment would basically be that even though some may feel that we're being double taxed, it's still a responsibility of the city, you know, that we, we ha, I have children, my children go to them schools, and whether another, um, government is not up to par on what they need to do, we need to stand alone and represent and make sure that this does pass, and it does get funded, and when we do have the conversation, if it's not one hundred percent something that the county is going to provide, that we can at least meet halfway and require them to meet halfway, because we still have responsibility as the board and parents to make sure our children are protected regardless if they live in city limits or not, so.
And is, is it not, is it the county's responsibility by state statute to provide school security? Mr. Attorney?
It must not be, because they'd be doing it right now if it was.
I don't know that it's, let me find my notes here, um...
I mean, in some counties, it's twenty-five percent, but schools have it right on up. Um, I think there's one school, one system has a hundred percent. Uh, Mr. Stevens, you shared your...
It says, "Per North Carolina state law, all facets concerning the governing and administration of the Craven County school system are the responsibility of the Craven County Board of Education and the Craven County Commissioners." That responsible, that responsibility includes meaningful provision for the protection of every person in and around those schools.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Question, Mr. Sabatelli, just a, a couple of things I wanna try to, to, to work through if we can. Does our, our current financial system allow us to break down the SROs, since they're, they're a city employee, a full-time officer, that only works in the school for nine out of twelve months? How, how would we designate that in our financials?
Our current financial system's not gonna allow us to do that, but the new system will. So we'll be able to do that once the new system is, uh, is fully implemented.
Second question, I assume, uh, that the county works off the same fiscal year we do, so it's July one through June thirtieth?
That, that's correct.
Is that the reason why the contract is dated July one?
Uh, that would be my assumption as well.
So they would have to wait until their budget's approved and everything's signed off before they would know?
Yeah, and, and if you'll notar, if you'll notice, the notarization of this was the seventeenth of July. So, I would imagine they need to know what their budget is, um, I'm pretty sure that they're gonna get that funding. I will say, uh, Chief, you can, Chief will vouch for me on this, we have, uh, time and time again, mentioned that we, as the city, as the staff members, were interested in trying to seek further funding to assist with the cost for these, as you saw, it's costing us eighty-some thousand dollars for officer per year, and we're getting thirty-nine thousand, that's less than fifty percent of what the cost of that officer is, when they're being utilized seventy-five percent of the year by the school through the resource officer program. So, we've discussed time and time again, and met with them time and time again, and even the county manager and others, uh, about the potential of adjusting this. You know, and, and I understand, it's, it's a very difficult decision in that their charge is to educate kids, um, and every bit of funding that they try to get, they probably wanting to try to apply that towards additional teaching and additional programs and things like that, but it is a burden to our system, uh, to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars almost, that we're having to supplement, uh, and, and not to mention that, you know, the liability, the insurance, uh, requirements, the workers' compensation if they were to get hurt, everything else, uh, that's on the backside, that's not calculated in that number.
Chief, I asked this question a few years ago, um, why were we even doing this? And, and you gave me a, a pretty good response. Could you kinda sum up that for us again?
I think it's very important for any jurisdiction to have the jurisdiction where the school is located to police the school. And there's a number of reasons for that. First and foremost, if there's an emergency, the officer of the department that the jurisdiction is in is trained to operate with the officers in that jurisdiction. When we arrive, we know what to expect in terms of what he will have prepared for us, because there's certain things that he needs to have ready for us, so we can immediately go in and go after the shooter. Uh, not to say that the sheriff's department couldn't do it, but it's not something that is done. It's much easier when the chief of police has control of that personnel, and you can ensure that that's done, because I'm very concerned, and I wanna ensure the safety of those children, because I'm gonna be held accountable. I can't speak for someone else's employees, I can speak for my employees. Number two, the intelligence, uh, the intel that we get from the students in, in the school, uh, for example, we have car break-ins in a, in a community, we have house break-ins in, in a community, and kids get to school and they talk. And the children, or the kids have a rapport with the officers, and often times, maybe one student might hear another kid talk about it and go talk to that officer, and the officer can piece it all together. And we can solve, uh, we have solved a lot of cases that way. Uh, and Officer Sterling just came up and whispered in my ear, the importance of just establishing a good relationship at, with, with the children, especially in the elementary age, but in the media, in, in media school age and high school age, of having that rapport with them, so when we see them on the streets, they feel comfortable talking to us, feel comfortable coming to us, and as they become adults, adults, and they get into that crime years, uh, we have less conflict when we have to take some type of action. So I, I can't overemphasize how important I think it is for the city to maintain a presence in the school system. Now let's say we're not in the school system, and a kid, uh, reports a crime that happened in the city, and let's say a deputy sheriff or any other agency is in there, if the crime happens in the city, a New Bern police officer still is gonna have to respond to take the report. So you're still taking an officer off the street to handle the crime, to investigate the crime, and right now, it's so much easier with the school resource officer in there that can do all of the above.
Chief, I'm, I'm, can I ask you a question?
Sorry.
How do you handle Craven Community College? That is in the city limits, we have an early college there, which are high school, ninth, tenth, eleventh grade students that are attending there, yet that officer is a county officer, yet they had a, a lockdown not too long ago, didn't they? And how did, how did that all pan out?
And if you want, my opinion is, was very dysfunctional. And luckily, there was an A active shooter, 'cause it, in my opinion, was very dysfunctional, I'll just leave it like that.
And, and that's okay, and I just wanna make sure that my comments tonight, I'm not against what you're doing, Chief, I support totally what you're saying. My only concern in all of this is the taxpayers of the city of New Bern bearing the burden, that's all. I have no disagreement that they should be our officers, whatever, we just sometimes have to have some relief in that, um, you know, we, we pay for the burden of parks in our community for everybody else to enjoy, and all the other things that we do, um, and now, resource officers, at some point, you know, we run out of money, and our citizens fuss at us. So, that's my only complaint.
The only thing to say that...
Let me get on to the best one.
I, I agree with you, um, Alderman Bingle, because I was under the impression that Craven County schools paid for all of the resource officers that was in all of our schools, but when I read the agenda and I saw this, I was really, I was, I was blown away, because I really thought that Craven County schools, and I think that they should support, they should be the ones paying for these resource officers, 'cause it's Craven County schools, and I, I feel the same way you do. I don't think that we need to put another tax burden on our taxpayers.
Well, if I'm not badly understanding, the, the thirty-nine thousand dollars per officer that we're currently getting is state grant money anyway, correct? So, so the, the county school system's not putting a dime towards it.
Alderman Harris?
Um, yes. Okay, so you're saying, I hear everything that you're saying, okay, and I understand the tax burden, but at the end of the day, okay?
Still our children, and I hear that.
Still our children, but if you have this conversation, and the, the county commissioners decide that they're not going to regardless, who's gonna be paying? So are we gonna do tit for tat, or are we gonna pick up the burden and make sure that our kids are taken care of? You understand? So I mean, we can go back and forth all day about a tax burden, this is a tax burden I would like to have, to know that my children are being safe. I mean, I grew up in an era in a city where we had dare, where there was a police officer, we learned about stuff like that, so, I mean, it's, it's crazy that it's not already in there, but you know, the, it's, it's our, to me, I feel like it's our responsibility. Some people might not agree, because it's coming at a tax rate, I understand, yes, in the, in next year, I would like to see it spelled out, because that needs to be transparent, that, you know, that that's, that's out there, 'cause this has been a hot topic. But at the same time, you know, we have, um, you know, military vets, retired vets, you know, that, you know, maybe we need to look at a, a, a bigger picture and, and, and get a, a conversation out there, that maybe there might be some retired vets that wanna volunteer in these schools. I mean, they're trained to the highest that wanna be in there to do that, too, that might be on a voluntary basis. I mean, the conversation doesn't stop here tonight, but in regards to this money and this funding, we need to go ahead and vote and move it forward, because it's gotta be done regardless. We're going to do what we gotta do, and then, you know, if we have a conversation with the county and, or the county school systems, and they don't have no money?
Because I always like people to know how I vote, I will vote yes, but I'm gonna vote yes with a protest, and my protest is that, um, you know, we are being, our citizens are being burdened with something they shouldn't be burdened with, and that it needs to be more transparent, so...
And, and that's exactly the reason why I made the motion I did, that we will, uh, go ahead and approve it tonight, with the understanding that some serious conversation takes place as soon as possible, and especially before next budget year. Yes, they, they need to step up to the plate with this one.
Mayor? Just a couple final comments I wanted to make before we move to a vote. Um, I, I pretty much agree, I think with everything that Alderman Bingle said, I do believe at the end of the day, this is a county function, they are primarily responsible. They are primarily responsible for this. I also appreciate what Alderman Harris, I really appreciate what the chief brought on, because to me, it sounds like there is a value of us having our internal people in there. What we need to do as a board and staff is figure out what that value is. And it's, it's hard to put a number on those things, I understand that, but I don't think it's, you know, a hundred percent county's financial responsibility if we're getting benefit out of it. We need to figure out, come up with a number somehow. Maybe our finance director can help us out with that. But we need to figure out what that number is, something that's amenable to all of us, and figure out what that is. And I agree, we need to have conversations with, you know, not only the county commissioners, but we need to have a, a conversation with county school board, and we also need to include the sheriff's department, because they're our partner in this. I think there's some challenge, unless something's changed, there's some challenges with communication that we have, they're on a different radio system than we are. There's a lot of moving facets and pieces to this. But the one thing I'll disagree with you on, as far as timing on when this takes place, I do agree, it needs to happen before next budget season, but it needs to happen after the election. Because like Alderman Bingle said, this has become an election issue. We already know there's going to be two new county commissioners, because two weren't running yet. There's, if I'm not mistaken, there's a two or three board of election, or board of education seats that are up, and the sheriff race as well. So I would prefer, let's approve this, move this forward. School's already started, we don't need to change what we're doing now. This has been the same way. It's been, last time I asked, for years, ever since this program's been in effect. So it's not like there's been a, a massive change in the funding this year, but we need to have that meeting, but it needs to be after the election. Again, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree.
I wanted to just add one, the other place we really need to work is, we've got a long session coming up in January. We need to be on the ground in Raleigh, talking to our delegation and other members to see if the state can provide more funding. We've got a lottery commission that gives funds for schools in the state. Maybe they can appropriate more money that could come this way, that can fund more of it. There's other options, so I think we need to, you know, be working with the League of Municipalities and other things to help us in this area.
Can't we put a resolution on to say that we would like them to create a mandate where the county is fully responsible? I mean, in solidarity of saying...
Well, the only thing is in a local delegation, unless all parties agree, they won't usually move a bill forward. Isn't that correct? They like to be all...
The entire legislative delegation needs to be unanimous, and it's recommendation to the general assembly, the general rule.
Otherwise, they won't hear it. Got you.
Anybody else? We had a motion by Alderman Astor, saying of Alderman Odom. At this time, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes, with protest.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and Board. It's kind of been, sort of discussed a little bit there, but item number fourteen is a resolution approving a school resource officer contract with Craven County Board of Education for additional officers in elementary schools. These two elementary schools being J.T. Barber and Oaks Road Academy. And the funding that is available at this particular contract is for forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars per officer. And if the contract is approved, the police department would need to increase its number of sworn officers by two. And there's a memo that's included in your packet that kind of covers this budgetary impact from Chief Summers and Mr. Savatelli. I will happy to answer any kind of questions.
Okay. Alderman Kinsey?
This discussion here is almost the same thing. We're going to hire two new officers just to work the schools. Once the schools are closed, what are they going to do then?
They are put on the street, and that's, the summertime is our busy time, so they're put on the street. They're a great resource, because kids are out of school and they know the kids. So it's, it's very valuable to have them on the street during that time. And those that are now on the street, they also assist in our youth summer camp.
Thank you. Okay.
So my, my next point is, we have funding for one year, possibly two. So that's, you know, roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year off of the...
Forty-nine.
You know, so that leaves us sixty-eight thousand we have to fund. If they don't do that, we're going to be faced with a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three sixty-four for these two officers per year, next year potentially, if they, if they don't fund it again. And then, the year after that, the year after that, the year after that. So we've just added that, and I assume, you know, they still can help us out in the summertime, but we're taking on that burden. I just want everybody to understand what we're, we're getting ready to do is take on this burden.
Can we table this one until we, and have some media conversations with the county?
Yeah.
Alderman Odom?
Yeah, I just, question for the chief is, chief, I think very seldom and very rare, you're a hundred percent fully staffed, correct?
Correct.
So hypothetically, let's say that we were to move forward with this, and the funding's not there next year, or we don't come to a resolution with the county and there's disarray on who's going to pay for this. It's not essentially that we would necessarily be adding to officers. Those SROs are trained sworn officers that can do other things, other than SRO duties, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But we're still taking on that extra burden of salary. So we're, and we're going to have to approve, taking the levels of how many officers we are up.
But we're, but right now, how many officers, sworn officers do you have on payroll right now, currently?
I want to say we've got eighty-seven, eighty-six, and two trainees. So we have one vacancy.
So one vacancy. And your, your turnover rate is fifteen percent, you're on average?
At least, at least ten percent, average ten a year.
So really, we only need to approve the amount for one, because you already have one budgeted, a vacancy, obviously?
No, we have to approve this because of the grant. You have to approve two.
Well, two, but one is technically already budgeted for, because when we pass the budget, we pass it based on one hundred percent of him being, in a sense, so that money's still in the, in the budget.
No, this is totally different money.
This would, this would be in addition to the head count, in a different capacity than what the, the positions he has this open. What I was trying to get a, a point across was, if the funding did go away next year, it's highly likely we're going to have some vacancies in their department, and those officers could slide into those roles and fill in.
But do they take a cut in pay, or do they stay at the same pay?
They stay the same pay.
So we're still liable for one sixty, I keep saying that, one sixty-seven, three sixty-four for the two officers.
But they would, they would fill a vacancy that we would be paying somebody else, instead of hiring a new police officer, we would take the SRO and move them into that position.
And I think, Mr. Odom, what you're saying, suggesting too, also, if we have two vacancies, at that time, you could tell us not to fill those vacancies?
That's correct.
Which would relieve you of the burden of the financial cost.
But then again, we shortchange our citizens. That's what I'm concerned about. Yes, okay, so we, we don't hire people, and then we've got people in, in my ward, and I know your ward, and, and Alderman Best, that are saying, we don't have enough patrols. We need, we need more officers.
No, when I, when we were talking about not funding the two, it would be not funding the SROs, and taking those SROs that we've got funding for this year, putting them into a regular police role.
A vacant position.
A vacant position, so.
Correct, I understand that, but we need more officers, and I, I have, I have concerns about this. I would rather table it to see if we can get some relief. These, have these gentlemen, we haven't even hired them, so they haven't started, so we don't know when the start date is for the two additional officers, or are they already in the schools?
No, they're, I'm waiting for...
What is the anticipated start date?
I'm waiting for Board approval. If Board approves it, I will try to figure out a way to get one in there immediately, if I can make some adjustments in my staffing, and probably the second one would at least be ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
So what we are looking at, still the security of the kids at school, as we said early on, so I feel that we need to go ahead and move forward and just approve this. And then deal with what we have to deal with, making the calls, as we said early on, to meet with the school board, county commissioners, police department, sheriff department, and do it as expeditiously as we can. Just go ahead and move along and get things moving, to look out for the security and the safety of the school system. It is in our city.
Right, I agree.
Mayor. One question, with the timing of this, is this funding that they're going to give us based off of the contractual year? Does there any limitations on when we actually find somebody to fill these positions? Is it prorated, if we find somebody half the year, do we only get half of the money, or do we get all the money? Do we know that?
That I don't know. I would assume that they would pay when we have someone in the school. That's my assumption. And my, my thought is, if I can arrange staffing, I will have a very capable existing SRO that would move to cover both of the elementary schools until I can get that second one.
Mayor, one last comment on this, that this is again, I mentioned there's a lot of facets and pieces to this puzzle. This is covering two elementary schools in the city limits, and I think there's five, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I understand why those two were chosen, they went through the grant process, and there were certain reasons on why those two were chosen, but there's three that's not. So even if we move forward with this, there's still three elementary schools in the city that's not covered.
They're going to be coming back for more money, with or without grants.
Right, because...
I just, I just want to say, just in the spirit of transparency, I will vote no to this one, without protest.
I, I, I think once we meet with these individuals and sit down and express what's going on and where we are, I, 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 I feel that they would come to the table willing to be a partner with us to make this work, because...
Well, why can't we meet with them in advance then? Why can't we meet with them right away?
It's an election season, I mean...
We can't right now, because like she says, it's an election season, and we're just preparing...
They're going to be more adamant to probably say no, because they want their voters to vote them in. I mean, we got to get the new set of people in there. I mean, I mean, it's really, it's really political.
That is a shame.
It is very...
That's a shame, I'm sorry.
But the children deserve to have someone in there protecting them, not just that two, but all of the schools. If this is going to be something we're doing, we need to make sure that we're taking care of all, all the schools. If, if we're going to stand up, we need to go ahead and do it.
The right thing is to do now is move forward and work it out as we go along. And we can sit here and discuss it all night long, and still haven't made the decision. We need to move forward now to make it work, give the chief the chance to go ahead and put people in the school system, and start to work with what we have before us.
No, make the motion. Okay, I think Alderman Kinsey, you did make a motion, and I think Alderman Harris, you seconded that motion, that's correct. You do have a motion and a second on this. Is there further discussion on item number fourteen? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
No.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, for the safety of the children.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Good job, senior New Bern.
You know, I don't...
It's tense. Good job, you did a good thing.
This is important that we can have this kind of debate and understand that we're here, you know, debating our conscience, and it's okay.
Right, I mean, someone has to do something, and we'll figure it out.
This is what good governance is all about. We'd like to see it in the rest of the country, wouldn't we?
Right, exactly.
Okay, let's go to item number fifteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Tying in with the two items that we just approved, this is a budget ordinance amendment for FY eighteen nineteen for the additional school resource officers. This budget ordinance amendment will be for the additional funds that are necessary for us to be able to fund the, and supplement what that lack of funding is for those officers. So we plan to take the amendment recognizing ninety-nine thousand dollars from the Board of Education, and a transfer of ten thousand dollars from contingency for this, and it will be transferred into the police department's budget.
Board have questions?
Mayor would like to make a motion, we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for FY two thousand eighteen nineteen for additional SROs.
Second.
Kinsey got it.
First, Alderman Odom, second, Alderman Kinsey. Is there further discussion? I, I just would like to say that part of my, and I'm going to vote for this, item fourteen is, is, you know, when you go to Oaks Road Academy and see what's happening, and the transformation that's happening there, and J.T. Barber, I mean, I have to support this. Doesn't mean I, I want to, and I don't appreciate getting back in the corner with this, this, I don't know the exact adjective, I want to use, describe this, this money that's here today, might not be here tomorrow, but again, and that's settled with that, let's go to a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
It bothers me to know that this was not discussed prior, and was in our budget. And I know the safety of the children is utmost importance, but I also look at it from a taxpayers' point. You know, this is taxpayers' money, and we already received something else from the General Assembly, where they're going to be requesting for more, more money from our tax dollars for the school systems. So it, it, it bothers me, but I, I'm going to vote no.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, before we go on, and to piggyback on what Alderman Best said, Mr. Stevens, would you just kind of elaborate a little bit on this newest contraption from Raleigh that allows the city to get itself deeper into being in the school system?
Well, um...
Finding, finding wise.
Can we go ahead and give an ordinance to make sure we don't have to abide by that period?
Well, and, and just to kind of brief the whole board here, the, the General Assembly basically approved provision that's in the state budget that allow, that would allow municipalities to use their property tax revenues to fund public schools and public education. This kind of stemmed from outside of the Charlotte area with a specific request of some of the local municipalities to be able to do so. I forwarded you all a, a, basically a, a letter that was distributed on behalf of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, the North Carolina Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition, the North Carolina Mayors Association, the North Carolina Black-Elected Municipal Officers, and the North Carolina Women in the Municipal Government, all in opposition of this whole policy that, and, and provision that the state legislators have passed. Essentially, what is happening is, is that the separation between the state and county funding mechanisms for school systems is eroding. And it's very interesting, when you think about how, what thirty, we were having this discussed a few minutes ago, thirty or so years ago, the state was like, eliminate city schools, city schools, city schools go away. As a matter of fact, I think the city of New Bern used to have their own city schools. And it's funny how things have kind of circled back, and that now they're wanting the municipalities to start funding schools. So like I said, all of these different organizations have kind of come out in opposition of this, and, and their concern is that, you know, municipal taxpayers are already paying for school costs as county and state taxpayers, and is it fair to burden them a third time as a city to pay for school systems, whereas county residents only have to pay for it at the state and the county level? And as somebody mentioned up here before, there are kids in James City, kids in River Bend, kids in, you know, Trent Woods, that go to New Bern High School or H.J. McDonald, and if we're having to supplement through a municipality, through our property taxes for these schools, then obviously that, that's a concern, when the county folks don't have to pay for that.
Quickest way to slow down growth, you know, I come, I grew up in an area in New York where the school taxes are so onerous to the people in the cities, in the small towns and villages, that they're having to move because they can't afford. I mean, my family pays fourteen thousand dollars a year in school taxes, and has no children in the schools. But, you know, that's just part of how they, how they fund, you know, their schools up there, but I'm, if we go down this path, I have great concerns that we will close out a lot of people who moved down here and enjoy our low tax rates with great service. And I understand, you know, we've gotta do something about education, but we need for the state and the county people to figure that out, because we're figuring out how to give good quality of life with good fire service and police protection, and parks and recreation, and the other wonderful things we do in making this community great. If we had to take the schools on, I don't know. It would be a burden.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, did you or staff receive any information from any of those organizations that Mr. Stevens just mentioned when this was going through the legislative process?
That's what's, one of the things that this thing points out, the letter that was kind of pointed out here, is this was something that was opted to be approved by the General Assembly in the eighteen nineteen budget without the ability to amend the bill in committee hearings or on the floor in either the House or the Senate, and did not, to my knowledge, really engage the League of Municipalities, which we pay for lobbying efforts, and we pay the North Carolina Metro Mayor's Coalition for lobbying efforts to be able to have opportunity to speak with legislators on these types of matters that can greatly impact municipalities, and specifically our city, in what our cost and our tax rates and everything else. So, and that was not had with these discussions.
The only thing I would say is that, I mean, this is great information. I feel like we shouldn't really get up in arms about things like this right now, because until someone actually comes and asks for a request for us to give some money towards funding, this is just saying that we have the ability to. Sometimes I just feel like it just depends on what administration is in the White House when things come down. Three years from now, this may be something different, you know, I don't think it's really, you know...
I feel like they just gave them some money.
Well, I'm saying, right, until a teacher or this county comes here, or someone's requesting money to pay for teachers, I mean, I don't really think we should really get up in arms, as we know about it. We really couldn't do anything about it, but I mean, the state, they're giving us the opportunity to utilize our property tax.
This is an educational opportunity to make us aware of what could be done.
I mean, when it comes to election times as citizens, what do we complain about? We complain about safety, we complain about better teacher and better wages. So, you're in the city, if you have the ability to be, you're a person that says, hey, teachers should make more money. Well, you're in the city, you're, okay, your taxes can now go to help the teachers pay more money. At some point, we can't...
And why did you move out of New York?
I know, I moved out of New York because of the weather. I'm just saying, at some point, we can go tit for tat, but, you know, stuff in life is not free. You have to pay, you know, you can't complain and not have a solution.
But I received more phone calls about drainage than streets and issues like that than I do anything else. So, I think we're already, you know, taxing our people to take care of the citizens of New Bern, and I just hate to see something like this come on.
But at the same time, we're building million-dollar parks and remodeling parks. I mean, so it's a give and take, there's wants and needs. So, people have to understand that. With taxes, there's wants and needs. I mean, their funds are being utilized properly, that's why they vote for individuals, and we represent them and we speak for the citizens. I'm just saying, it's not a bad thing that we just pass to get two more police officers to take care of, you know, protecting our kids in a county school system. You know, we have to mend that bridge, but I mean, to go back and forth and just to complain that we have to do it makes no sense to me, it's just, it's something you have to do. Someone's gotta do it, so why not the city of New Bern?
When you say complain, what do you mean? You're complaining about...
No, I'm saying people in general, when they like, yeah, no, I would say...
I am sitting up here complaining, I'm complaining for the taxpaying citizen. I'm gonna be their voice in this, because they already pay county taxes, city taxes, school taxes, and state taxes, and now you're talking about imposing another tax. So, I look at it from a taxpayer's position.
But if those individuals have children, and no one else is willing to go ahead and fund to put the officers or anything into the school, someone has to stand up and have a responsibility to go ahead and speak out.
They should fall in the county. They need to do burdening.
Right, but when the state and counties say no, there's still someone that has to be responsible until you figure it out or mend that situation, who's gonna suffer? So, that's why somebody has to stand up and do what we have to do, I mean, it is what it is.
I don't, of course, I think this, we're way off subject here. I don't think there's any issues with any of us on the board wanting to protect our children in those schools.
I didn't say that.
I know, I understand. But I just, but I do think that the responsibility of funding shouldn't be completely on the backs of the city taxpayers, when the city, every city taxpayer pays county taxes also.
Right, I agree.
So...
And a portion goes through schools. That's why we need to have a conversation.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor, if we could, I would like to direct staff to come up with a resolution that the city of New Bern opposes this new legislation, and let us send these, that resolution to all of these groups that we pay thousands of dollars to lobby on our behalf, so when legislation gets back in session, they can put that money to work.
I second that motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, this time, let's go to appointments, item number seventeen, Ms. Bingle.
Did we, did we approve number sixteen?
Yeah.
We haven't done sixteen yet.
Sorry, yeah, we need to do one more sixteen.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, it's a budget amendment.
Go ahead.
It's a, item number sixteen is a budget ordinance amendment for FY eighteen nineteen. This budget ordinance amendment covers the rollovers that we have, or outstanding purchase orders from fiscal year seventeen eighteen into our current fiscal year. Oftentimes, we have projects or items of purchase, which we have as we're closing out the end of the previous fiscal year, that roll into the next fiscal year. So, Mr. Sabatelli has, provides you a memo that outlines all of those different things we'll be rolling over. So essentially, we take the unspent funds from the seventeen eighteen year and roll them into the fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Board have questions?
I make a motion that we consider adopting a budget order amendment for FY twenty eighteen nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kinsey, second by Alderman Odom. Is there further discussion? Seeing on the Saturday roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, appointments, item number seventeen, Mr. Alderman Odom.
Uh, no appointments, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not this time, sir.
Alderman Astor?
None.
Alderman Harris?
None.
Alderman Bingle?
None.
Attorneys report?
Nothing important, I mean, Mayor.
City managers report?
I've got several ruling, well, two of them, I think, will be relatively quick. One of them may induce some discussion by the board. I think Alderman Best, you had brought a question with regards to a policy for extreme heat or extreme cold conditions, we've done some research on that. We didn't necessarily have anything formalized on the book, Ms. Hayes and her staff have put together some information. We're working on that right now, and it is our hopes to have something a little more formalized that we will be able to implement. I don't know that it necessarily needs to come before the board, we can handle that administratively through some of our internal policies, but ultimately, if it does need to come before the board, we would definitely do that. But I just wanted to make sure and let you know and report back that we have looked at that, researched it, and we're working on getting that in place. I've already mentioned with regards to the part of funding, so I won't rehash that. The other item that I have, and I'm gonna kind of turn over my, a little bit of my time over to Mr. Sabatelli, but I think there was, at the end of our board meeting, at our last board meeting, we had a closed session to discuss some topics, and we came out of that closed session, and the board had requested that staff do some research to find out about other properties that were non-taxable, I guess, or non-income producing or revenue-producing for the city with regards to ad lorm taxes throughout the entire city limits. Those specifically were, that we're really wanting to focus on was the housing and tax credit properties that are existing within the city, and there's multiple of those. Some of those owned by the Housing Authority, some of them privately, some of them through partnerships with nonprofits here and there. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Sabatelli. He's got a little bit of report that he is gonna provide you with regards to how some of those things are structured, and whether or not we actually are able to collect taxes, and in certain cases where we are, what those conditions are in order for those to have to be met, so.
JR, any chance that could be put up on the screen that we can see? Are you just gonna, do we have that?
No.
Okay.
Sorry. What I've done is, I just kind of generically prepared a, get an idea of what the tax exempt properties, excuse me, what the tax credit properties within the city are. You've got various ones owned by a number of different, a number of different groups and individuals throughout the city. Landmark Apartments, Brunswick House, there's like three lots on Ghent, on Ghent, that are basically essentially one unit, that again, that received the tax funding credit, Oak Ridge Apartments, et cetera, et cetera, there's a number of those. Green Park Terrace is another, Weatherstone Apartments. So, essentially, what it boils down to is how these entities are set up, as far as the taxation goes. I will specifically be taught, I'll specifically talk about the New Bern Housing Authority property, Craven Terrace. Essentially, with Craven Terrace, what had happened is the Housing Authority has given up their, or has essentially provided their, sold their ownership interest in the improvements. Essentially, those are the buildings and those sorts of things, and they retain ownership of the land. That has been sold, in essence, to Preservation Management. Preservation Management is, essentially has a leasehold on Craven Terrace. Now, when it comes to these, when it comes to the taxation of these types of tax credit entities, the reality is, it doesn't matter how they're funded. What it, what matters is ownership, what matters is the usage. With the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority was established to, essentially as a nonprofit entity, as a government entity as well, they are established to provide low-income housing to residents that meet that criteria. What they, what they're doing is by selling, essentially selling the Craven Terrace to the developer is creating what would look like a taxable situation. However, based on a ruling, a state tax ruling, there is the possibility that these types of transactions are not taxable. If there is ownership by a nonprofit entity in something such as Preservation Management, meaning the Housing Authority or some other nonprofit has any type of ownership as low as one-tenth of one percent of that corporation, then that ownership has the tax exemption passed through to Preservation Management.
So, let's head to the chase, what you're telling us is Craven Terrace pays no property tax, because it's owned by the Housing Authority, is that correct?
Craven Terrace actually is not, Craven Terrace is not owned by the Housing Authority. The land is, however, the, however, the structures are of Preservation.
From the land, that it's passing through to the organization, so the organization that now owns it does not pay property tax? Period, amen, we're not getting property tax. That's the end of the day question.
Yes, that is the end of the day, there's no tax, there's no taxation currently on Craven Terrace.
Because the owner is nonprofit.
The owner, it's really, what it boils down to is the owner of the owner.
Yeah, the Housing Authority owns the dirt, so they partnered with these people, so they have ownership in the total project, therefore, because of their nonprofit governmental status, the developer gets the same status, and they don't pay property taxes.
Yeah, if the developer was not a nonprofit, then they would be having to pay the tax, the property taxes.
Well, if, well, not necessarily, because if the developer, if the developer, call it Developer LLC, that's an example I used earlier today, Developer LLC has multiple owners, if multiple partners within its own membership, okay? If one of those is a nonprofit entity whose purpose is to provide low-income housing, like the Housing Authority, then that passes through and makes that property non-taxable, those improvements are non-taxable.
So, how many properties do we have like that in the city?
Three.
Three being Craven Terrace?
Craven Terrace, Weatherstone Apartments, and Green Park Terrace.
Okay, but we also, okay, but then, of course, Trent Court doesn't pay taxes, neither does the Tower.
Well, I was only specifically looking at the tax credit entities.
Okay.
And Trent Court currently does not have a, does not have a tax credit.
They pay through a, payment lieu of taxes. It's a calculation.
Very, very low amount.
Very, very low amount.
Like forty-eight hundred dollars, I believe.
Yes, ma'am, forty-eight hundred dollars, their total, their total actually pilot was seven thousand four hundred nineteen for last year. The city got forty-eight hundred, the county got almost twenty-three hundred. Just how that's divvied up.
So, in getting this information, this leads us to the property, if we sell property to the Housing Authority, and a developer partners with them to build something on that property, that property is non-taxable, is that what you're telling me?
Not necessarily. I've got...
I don't understand, but you're saying if they own a piece of it, so they're therefore...
You have to, I had to whiteboard this earlier to make sure that I fully understood it. So, bottom line is, you have to separate the land, the taxability of the land from the taxability of the improvements, okay? The improve, the land itself, flat out non-taxable, because that ownership is the Housing Authority, okay? So, the Housing Authority is essentially leasing the land to the developer, call it, again, call it Developer LLC. Developer LLC has two members, okay, say, just basically two owners, okay? One is the main developer, who's actually fronting the money to build the, build the structures. The other developer, the other owner may be a nonprofit, it may be the Housing Authority, it may be another, it may be another nonprofit, it doesn't have to be. If it's another nonprofit, and they own at least one-tenth of one percent, then, and their purpose is to provide low-income housing, then that property is non-taxable. However, if it's Mark Stevens and JR Sabatelli are the two, are the two individuals that are fronting the money for this, and the two partners in that LLC, then it becomes, then it is likely going to be taxable. So, if, essentially, you keep, you gotta keep them all separate.
To my understanding, Penrose was not a nonprofit?
I'm sorry, Penrose for...
Developers for...
From my understanding, they're nonprofit, or I'm sorry, they are for profit, they're taxable.
But I'm saying, they're not a nonprofit status company.
That's correct, from my, from my understanding.
Right.
But do we know if the Housing Authority will have any interest in that project? Do we know that? We don't know that.
According to Marty, the answer is no, but he was advised not to.
Wouldn't this all boil down to make an application to Mr. Antri, and based on the pro formula for whatever credits, et cetera, the whole...
If anything wants, if they want it to be tax exempt, they would have to file an application with the county, with Mr. Antri.
And then, Mr. Davis, does the city then have to adhere to whatever if it's tax exempt by the county, based on the call by Mr. Antri?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, there is an option for...
So, there's a little gray area as to whether or not, number one, the developer applies for tax exempt status.
And we don't know the status of Gaston Boulevard, that could potentially go back and ask for an exemption as well.
That's between them and Mr. Antri, I would think.
Yes, so that's another thing.
Number one, if they apply for it...
Could potentially not get the tax revenue from.
As of right now, Gaston Boulevard is taxable.
Excuse me?
As of right now, Gaston Boulevard is taxable, and according to Mr. Antri, they have not filed for any type of exemption.
The interesting thing is that, is the pilot on that, payment lieu of taxes, wherever, however, they're generous enough to give us forty-eight hundred bucks, because, I mean, you know, pilot is, is an optional item that different institutions do or don't do. Yes?
Mr. Davis, since, if we were to move forward with an agreement with them for this particular property, since this is working in conjunction with the Housing Authority, and that allows us the opportunity to put provisions or conclusions on that, can our contract and offer to them state that it must be sold or transitioned over to a fully profit, a full-profit organization? Can that be part of our stipulation?
That's a great question, I don't know the answer to it. My gut would be no, because the statute provides that the city can provide property to any entity that fulfills a public purpose, and add conditions that continue the public purpose. So, the statute, in this case, would allow us to put a condition that the property must be used for low-income housing, but the statute doesn't give us broader authority to add other conditions, and that, that, excuse me, that, you know, it shall be so many units or anything else like that. So, I don't know that we'd have the authority in the statute, but happy to look into it, though.
So, what you're asking, Alderman Odom, I understand, so you're asking, could we put an inclusion that said, this property must be taxable?
Correct.
Okay.
Another question, just not to lose your thought, question, Harris, but the, I'm not sure that a contract provision could trump a state statute. If there's a statute that says this is how it's going to be, I don't know that that would fly either. Maybe through a contract, it might.
Go ahead.
I wouldn't be who I am if I didn't make my comment, I just think it's, you know, for transparency, I just think it's kind of hilarious that the individuals that were so for wanting to sell this property are not wanting to sell it or move forward with it, because we may not get any money off of it. If the whole importance of it was for the helping Trent Wood, Trent Court, and those individuals find affordable housing, why would it matter if it's for-profit or not-profit in regard to the main purpose was for those individuals? I'm just throwing that out there, that now we're having a discussion back and forth that you don't want to move, people, individuals don't want to move forward, because we won't make any money off of it, but I thought we cared about individuals... because we won't make any money off of it, but I thought we cared about individuals not being in tents and shelters if we have a hurricane. Now, it's, we care about money.
I'll go on record and say, it doesn't matter to me whether the property is taxable or not, but the question had been raised by, I think, you and some others, that was this going to be taxable property?
I don't care either way because I'm voting no, but I'm saying in regards to it, for everybody else that was against what was being said, and because I've been adamant about this for a very long time, why does it being for-profit or nonprofit matter if the people that we're supposed to care about are the individuals that are going to suffer if we don't have affordable housing?
Because at the end of the day, if another developer were to come up and if the city were to say, "No, thank you Housing Authority, we're going to put this property up for sale to the highest bidder and go through the, the upset bid process", if another developer such as Schiff that's doing the Brody property or Gaston Boulevard came in, then they're going to be in the same situation. We, then we would have no control over the property at all. We would go through the upset bids, upset bid process and either decline the offer or either sell it, but I don't think probably, we would probably be questioned if every time we got the highest bid was one that was for a taxable property and we were all in favor of doing it, but if the high bid actually happened to be a non-taxable property and we say, "No, thank you on this time", and then six months later, we decide we want to sell it hoping that we would get a taxable property. So, to me, it doesn't matter, I think it, the project is valid one way or the other. I think there's still, the ultimate concern, I think, that was expressed during the last conversation, is how many people from Trent Court would actually get a unit? I mean, at the end of the day, I think that's the ultimate question.
My concern is if it's a non-taxable property and we're only going to move twenty units of the eighty from there, that doesn't really help the situation.
Correct.
Plus, we get no, no taxation from that, and that isn't concerning to me.
I made that statement in the last meeting, that exactly, that the, the property has not been out for advertisement, so why would it be okay that we just go ahead and do this side deal for the Housing Authority and there may be other developers that want to come in and do something out there? I mean, but no one was listening to me when, when I said that. I'm just saying, for transparency, that when the Trent Court individuals here, I, like I said, I'm always going to say no because I represent Pembroke, but for those individuals, everyone was concerned about what was going to happen, but now it's a possibility we don't get any money, now we want to pull back on motions or, or not move forward with giving them an offer because we can't make money off these individuals. I'm just putting that out there. And it's not directed towards you, it's just in general because we have open discussion.
I understand, but I think at the end of the day, the, the question is, is how many people are going to get a unit? And I think, I, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think we would, as a board as a whole, feel more comfortable if there was something in front of us that said, "Out of eighty units, seventy-five or seventy of them will be residents of Trent Court", versus if we go through this nonprofit status and only fifteen residents from Trent Court are able to get a new unit, that really doesn't make a lot of sense in the grand scheme of things. So, I think that's the missing piece. It's not necessarily whether it's taxable or not, it's whether or not how many people from Trent Court are going to be afforded an opportunity. From the information I've been told, it's going to be a lot, much higher than a typical project.
Well, that's, I mean, from the last meeting that we had with them, I, you know, he did, basically did say that they have to go through that process and that they understand that process. We, you know, our questions were just like, you know, what's Plan B and C if all of them can't move over there or you're not breaking ground until 2021? That was my main concern, you know, what was going to happen in between there. But for, for this conversation though, it's just the application process and I'm, I'm under the impression that we, you know, that they just want the option to be able to do it. They might not get approved, then we're back to where we still have our property, correct? Like, you know, if they don't get approved, they're not going to move forward purchasing the property.
My understanding was they want to buy the property regardless. Or they were, at least optioned it tied up for a year or two, is my understanding? So, so, correct, they'll pay an option fee, but they might not close if they don't get their grant.
Right, so then, then it's ours and then, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in that regard, based on the discussion, what do we need to do as a board to give an answer? Or did they respond back to what we, where we countered and said, "We want the full price"?
I have not had discussions with them yet, the calls of the information that the board requested at a closed session, not the, but anyways.
Open session, we did have that in, we did it in open session.
We did that in open session, but the board expressed concern with regards to the taxable status and what other projects this would kind of mirror or mimic. So, therefore, we did that research and then we were going to have some discussion as to whether we go forward or not.
I think we, we voted to move forward with the options. We, we did want the additional information because, I mean, it, it, I don't know if it's a negotiating tool or whatever, but I am extremely concerned, you know, about the status and how it's going to work. I mean, so, in, in that case, if it, if they, if they're partnering with the Housing Authority to get a nonprofit status for themselves, to not pay the property taxes, concerns me unless, just like Mr. Schiff is building eighty, eighty units.
I clearly, I clearly understand, and that's my concern.
Right.
Is that you're saying move forward, but you have concerns. So, my concern is, is that.
We already took a vote, though. I thought we took a vote.
Yeah, it was.
We didn't take any.
I thought we did, I thought we took a vote.
So, at this, I, I consider at this point that, Mark, that you need to reach out to the Housing Authority to see if, if they want to accept our offer. And that's the way I feel.
Well, the last time I talked to him, the question was, and Mark told me that he was trying to find out this information.
Exactly.
Before he reached out to him, because there might not be any need to reach out to him.
Right.
You know, so, in his defense, he was, he was holding off on trying to...
I'm not saying that he did anything wrong, I'm just saying we did vote to move forward, but with the caveat that we just wanted this information. I mean, they may come back to us and say, "Okay, we'll take it, but we want to do A, B, and C", and we may say no based on the fact of this new information.
So, okay, how hard is it for us to get an ad hoc together and have a sit-down with Pembroke and then just to answer these questions before we move forward? Because, I mean, we, I mean, whether, I mean, not, not to say a, a public hearing because they already came and explained, but having a conversation where they can answer, you know, the, the Housing Authority is going to own the land, so we won't get taxes on that. But Pembroke, the individuals are for-profit and no one in their business is nonprofit, but are you going to come down the road and partner? You know, we need to know that, but does that mean that necessarily they'll be forthcoming with that information? I mean, at some point, we just can't steal the, 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 what's the word? Not the debate, but the transaction based on whether down the road they're going to decide to, to, to switch over ownership because, you know...
Well, Alderman, I would think that the Housing Authority, Mr. Blaney, should get that information from Pembroke and should be willing to give that information to us. So, we should leave that up to him to find out that information, because before I make a, a vote on it, I want to know if it's going to be a taxable or non-taxable units. And right now, at this point, we don't know.
Well, it seemed from the information that, if, I felt, based on what was said, like eventually Marty was going to be handling, like the Housing Authority was going to be handling the day-to-day operations, so, no?
I don't think so, I think that's going to be us.
Okay.
That's the question I've had along, is why is the Housing Authority pushing a project that's going to work themselves out of a job?
Right.
And I've asked them that, but at the end of the day, it's...
Because they say they're running for the safety of their, for their residents, they're trying to move their residents out of that flood zone.
Right.
So, that was your main concern.
I don't think there's any other way to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, the funding's not there to do it at Trent Court, but physical barriers, contour of land, et cetera, it's, it's not going to happen, so this is the only model to make it happen. And, and the flaw is that, the original discussion was, is we thought eighty units were going to be available for eighty Trent Court residents, so it's evidently not, so... So, anyway, do you need any further direction from the board at this time, in this manner?
I've got my direction, I just wanted to report back on that, unless I'm hearing differently, then no.
Okay, and did you have another item under your report?
That is it, sir.
You didn't have anything else?
Ma'am, excuse me. So, Mr. Stevens, you're going to contact the Housing Authority, Mr. Blaney, you're going to see if they accept our offer, and also find out if Pembroke are the only owners of, the developers that are very the only owners?
I will try to find as much information as I can regarding their existing situation. I know J.R. had a discussion with them, so maybe between my conversation with them and J.R.'s, we will summarize that in an email to all of you and report back.
Thank you.
Through email.
And Mayor, just, just, Members of the Board, just to add one last point to that, so we're all clear. The discussions that City Manager will be having with the Housing Authority will be discussions that might lead to a draft contract that will come back before use, just so that we're all clear, nothing will happen unless you see it, you read it, you think about it, and, and even at that point, you can decide against it. So, you're not making a decision to sell anything, you're simply directing the City Manager with some negotiating authority.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? On the agenda under appointments, the one for the Allies of Cherry Point tomorrow? Do, who, are we supposed to do that appointment in regards to?
Well, we need to, I don't know, we need to do it tonight, we need to be very careful as to making sure that somebody that has that kind of background and is going to attend those meetings is, is the right appointment. Hopefully, it's City Resident, could be a board member, it could be a staff member, but I don't know if we're ready to do that tonight unless somebody has a good appointment.
I'll just say that it is a very involved board and they have a lot of meetings, and I'm sure Assistant Manager Coler could vouch for that, so.
So, with that said, let's, ready to go to new business? Let's do that, starting with Alderman Baker.
Okay. That's my list, several items. First of all, I really, you know, I know I speak for the other Aldermen in that we get many, many calls about abatement. People complaining to us about too much brush, you know, or somebody hasn't cut something down, there's trash in the yard, it looks bad. And for many years, we called, Chip Dickerson was my right-hand man, and he left that spot, and now my right-hand woman is Nancy Johnson. And I really think that, I, I hope she's watching tonight, tonight, will you please tell her tomorrow and do this, what an awesome job. She stepped into a role that was held by somebody for many, many years and it never missed a beat, as far as I'm concerned, from when I was here four years ago to coming back now. And I call her on a weekly basis because I'm getting complaints and she documents everything, she's Johnny on the spot, and I just want to, you know, publicly thank her for what she does because she really helps us in many of these incidents. So, please give her my sincere thanks and tell her what a great job she does. Also too, Nancy Regelsberger does an awesome job too, and she's got a lot to put up with, with all of the houses, minimum housing standards that we're going through. Mr. Manager, a couple of things I want to update, and I know that Matt Montaigne is, is not here, but we've been working on this Watch For Me program and the intersections and the danger of people trying to cross intersections. And recently, I had a group of, of gentlemen come see me who attended Rotary at the Chelsea and about got killed trying to cross the street there at Middle and Broad because the cars were flying by and nobody stopped down, they walked into the intersection, the car didn't slow down, the bike got killed. So, they were really upset, we had a long conversation. So, I have spoken to Matt about it and we will be installing some blinking signals, so maybe you can give me more detail on that. Chrissy, you may be able to as well. And that's going to basically tell people that it's a crosswalk, somebody's entering into the crosswalk and to slow down. Can you give me a little more detail on that?
Correct, there's a difference between signalized and non-signalized intersections. At the non-signalized intersections, he has ordered the, it's a flashing sign where the round sign lights up and there's a light bar that lights up when the button's pressed to alert motorists that there's a pedestrian waiting to cross. And then, we've been working on high-visibility solutions to paint the crosswalk as well, so I think he's going to do all that together. He's going to do it at multiple non-signalized intersections. And then, he is getting some final quotes on the signalized intersections. And of course, that's a little different because it ties into the timing of the stoplight and it's all integrated and more expensive than the non-signalized. But those are on order, the non-signalized intersection warning signs are on order and he's just waiting for those to come in before making those improvements.
Okay, so we can tell the citizens that something is going to be coming? Because that's a really very, very busy intersection. Also too, Mr. Manager, Mr. Stevens, could you update us on some of the ADA things you've been doing with regards to making this building accessible? I know you're working on some stuff. Again, I get many questions about what are we doing to try to make this handicap accessible?
Sure, one of the issues that has been longstanding is the accessibility of City Hall to folks who are, who need accessibility options. And one of the things that we're looking at is a potential internal elevator option that would provide some accessibility. We've got some contractors looking at it, they're supposed to be getting us some quotes. I assume Assistant Manager, you haven't, Coler, you haven't seen those quotes yet, but I know there's several contractors that have looked at that. We've also started work for some conceptual design regarding the external part of the, I guess, the handicap accessibility, so that we can prepare those visuals for you all to, to look at and see, but also in preparation for what would be forthcoming regarding any kind of submittals we would be required to do for HPC. So, we've been working with local architect on that as well to get some renderings of that. But it appears as if we may have a potential viable option for at least getting folks into the building on the first floor and then accessibility to the second floor readily, easily through some, some construction changes outside of the foyer of the entryway into the first floor and up through to the second floor. So, that's kind of where we stand right now, but until we get the quotes, we don't know what the numbers are, we don't know...
We are working on it, that's what I want the public to know, we are working on it, so on, thank you. Ms. Church, I'm glad to see you, we've missed you this summer, so I know you've probably been on vacation, so it's nice to see you out in our audience again. I also want to give a huge, huge shout-out to UNC TV, who's branding themselves as Public Media in North Carolina. This past Saturday, they had Readeroo, who's the kangaroo, Readeroo's on PBS and many of the characters that are associated with that at the Convention Center. It was a free event for all children and we had almost two thousand children attending it. It was an awesome, awesome event, the diversity, you would have loved it. I saw children of all ages there, and it was so much fun, brought my granddaughter, I'm, I'm so pleased. But I want to let, let everybody know that they will be back in New Bern September fourth through the eighth. Speaking to citizens, they've already been in the community, they've been everywhere throughout New Bern doing videos and interviews to really highlight New Bern and tell the rest of the state of North Carolina who we are. On Wednesday, September fifth, you've all received invitations to the convening, which will take place at the Convention Center from eight to one. We will have three different sessions on economic development and community redevelopment. We'll be talking about the nonprofits in our community and the good work we're doing, and then we're going to also be talking about the schools and workforce development. We're very honored that Dr. Scott Rawls, who used to live here in New Bern, was the president of the Community College, now in Virginia, is going to be here to facilitate it. UNC TV has taken care of all of this, they've brought all of their wealth of knowledge and talents to here. I want to thank the North Carolina Community Foundation, the Craven County Chapter, who supported this with a ten thousand dollar donation to UNC TV, as well as Carolina East, who did the same in, in providing this. So, I mean, I hope you all can be there on Wednesday, it's going to be a great event. What we hope to glean from this is we look forward in the future to having this board do a live meeting with the, I don't know, is it Board of Aldermen or Board of Commissioners in Statesville?
It's not Statesville, it's Hickory, but I'm pretty sure they're commissioners, if I'm not mistaken.
So, what we'll do is we'll have a meeting with them and we'll actually via Skype be able to talk to them and discuss problems they have in the West versus problems we have at East, and this will be an outreach of what comes out of this meeting next week. So, I'm excited about it, I've sat on this board for many years and they kind of just humored me for a while and we finally got them here in New Bern. So, I'm, Mark has been pretty involved with the process and I'm really excited about what's going to happen, so. And Foster, again, congratulations on the part of Graham, your staff did a great job, really excited for you. Thank you, sorry I had so much.
Okay, Alderman here.
Mayor, the only thing I have is I just want to give a shout-out to the chief over there in regards to accepting the Lip Sync Challenge. The city and New Bern Police Department did awesome and they have so many views. And I was telling you earlier that I think that we should do a Board of Aldermen Lip Sync Challenge and then challenge another city to, to do it, to keep it going.
Works for me.
I'm glad it works for y'all.
We, we could do it at one of our meetings, we could lip sync and, and keep the momentum going because New Bern is awesome, that's all I got for you. Oh, Footloose on the Noose, Friday, the thirty-first, is going to be Joe Brown and the band. You have to come out and see this, this group, they are awesome. We're going to have food, drinks, and bring some chairs and stuff, it's going to be really, really nice.
Alderman asked. I know you usually get Matt to do this, but he's gone, so I was going to just ask, do you have any updates? Um, I know you usually get Matt to do this, but he's gone, so I was going to just ask, do you have any update on Airport Road? The progress is being made?
Uh, as as far as I know, it's, uh, still in design phase. Um, you know, that's going to take some time. Uh, obviously, they, um, are, I think, whenever they submitted us their first plans, it was like twenty-five percent planned. So obviously, it's going to take some time to finalize the design and through the calculations and and the plan drawings. And then ultimately, uh, I have not seen any of those revised plans or drawings, so obviously, they're still working on it, but it will take a little time.
Thank you. And also, can somebody, I'm not sure who it might be, give us an update on the redevelopment commission? Is there, has a board member been notified and?
Jeff, what's it? Yes, the board mem, all the board members have received a letter. Uh, uh, Ms. Blanko has sent out an official letter telling them they've been appointed. Uh, Mr. Regeri, if he wants to come up, he's in the process of, um, scheduling and orientation.
Yes, so the letters went out welcoming all the members of the commission last week. I had a phone call with Tyler Mulligan from the school government last Thursday morning at ten o'clock and we are working on his schedule to come down and give an, oh, a full-day orientation to the group on the redevelopment commission, what it is, what they can do and how they move forward. So that looks like it's going to be sometime in October. He still hasn't given me back, uh, the exact dates, uh, that he's available. I'm going to touch base with him again tomorrow to get those, but we're moving in that direction.
Good. Thanks. Anything else? Alderman Casey.
Well, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Avery, Jeff, uh, Jordan, for working with me along with City Manager and cleaning up a lot of the areas of the city that I received calls on and they pretty much jumped right on it. And I just want to reach out and say thank you very, so very much for reaching out to help out the city.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Alderman Best.
I I too piggyback on Alderman Bingo and, um, Alderman Kenzie to our employees for such great jobs that you do for this, for our citizens of this city and for the city of New Bern. Um, I've had a lot of calls from different residents and I call your department and you jump right on it. So I'm giving a shout-out and kudos to all of the department heads, vision heads and their staff.
Um, thank you for a job well done. Um, secondly, I just want to ask JR if you had an opportunity to meet with Craven County in reference to the collection of the beer wine license?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The I spoke with Ronnie Andrew regarding that. The county is not going to be able to, uh, facilitate that collection for us and it is actually not included in our agreement with them anyway. Uh, they're going through with a financial system conversion at this time and it's not going to be prudent for them to actually do that collection. So we'll, we're going to handle that internally.
Okay. So you'll still be within the, um, utility department there, be collecting that?
Yeah, as of right now, the UBO staff is is going to be collecting that. Uh, um, once we go to the new system, I'll be looking to see if, possibly switching that around. But, uh, we'll see what the most efficient way to handle that is in the future.
Thank you. And lastly, I just want to, um, give my condolences. I want to do a shout-out and give my condolences to Senator John, um, McCain and his family. He was, uh, one that we can call a true veteran. Um, he really served his country honorably. And he has been a US Senator for thirty-five years, so I tell you, he is one that should be honored. And that's all that I have.
Okay. Here, here, Alderman Best. I totally agree with you.
Alderman Earl.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. I'm so sorry, but, um, Avery, I've contacted Matt on several occasions about this property located on the corner of Simmons and Griffin. It's where the fire department burned the house down and the, uh, do you have any idea of what's going on there? I I just, as I'm sitting here, received an email from some more citizens out there complaining that nothing's happened there.
I'm not totally aware. I am aware of the property and what's going on at this time, but I don't have a a definite answer on what the plan is for the property because the last I was told was they wanted the concrete pad removed from the property. That's that's there after the house was torn down. That was the last thing I've.
Mark, would you please, there I I've received several emails. There's, and I've been out there on the site a couple of times. And I know Matt's had conversations several times with the owners of the property and they have said that they were going to take care of it. Um, but it's it's a pool of water out there where the foundation was. It's somewhere, they say, up to two feet deep, you know, from where, uh, the house was burnt down and it just needs some attention. It needs to be taken care of as quickly as possible, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Astor, Matt has been working with Epiphany School on that. Um, he, we are going to help facilitate getting a contractor in there to take care of all that work, um, to just to help them out, and he's working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that that the essentially the the house was torn down, Epiphany School, uh, has the ownership of the property, I think, and ultimately, it's their responsibility. Uh, their complaint was that they were having difficulty finding contractors who would be willing to do the work. I guess it's so minor, so small that they are so busy that they don't want to bother with it. So in the interest of trying to facilitate some kind of movement towards some resolution, the city opted to, uh, help and assist them in finding a contractor to get the work done. So that's kind of where we are.
I I reckon the bottom line is if we can move in as long as quick as possible because the people that live right there beside it say the mosquitoes are terrible out there and, you know, some rodents and everything else, too. And it 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 does look bad. It really does. I mean, something needs to happen. So I appreciate if you check one for me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to, Chrissy, I just want to thank you publicly on behalf of the City of New Bern for serving us for these past few years. And for those who don't know, Chrissy's last day will be Friday. I want to thank you for your service to our city and our citizens and I appreciate the work that you did. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Great job, Chrissy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else at this time? Uh, do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir. Brief closed session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to one forty-three, three thousand eleven, A six.
Okay. Second. Motion by Alderman Earl, saying to Alderman Kenzie. All party to motion say aye. Aye, all opposed say.